I'd like to please call to order the Board of Education meeting for Celine Area Schools for January 25th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. If everyone could all please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, welcome, to those viewing at home and those who bared the cold tonight. Appreciate it. Right now is our first opportunity, please, for public comment. A member of the public may address the Board briefly for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and limited to agenda items. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the Board should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against a Board member, district employee, or student. I am seeing no public comment forms from students. I am seeing one public comment form from Laura Washington and Michelle Chakowicz, Celine Area Schools employees. Hi there, how are you? If you, if you guys can just toggle it on and then toggle it off when you're done, that would be great, and I know you've been here many, many times before, but Secretary Jones will show the yellow card when you have 30 seconds left, show the red card when you have finished your three minutes, and we would just ask that you complete your thought, and thank you very much.
All right, thank you. My name is Michelle Chakowicz, and I'm the Principal of Woodland Meadows Elementary School and President of the Celine Area Schools Administrators Association. And with me today, I have the Principal of Celine Middle School and the Vice President of our Celine Area Schools Administrators Association, Laura Washington, and Carol Mulcher, who is the Principal of Celine Alternative High School and the SASSA Treasurer. On behalf of all of our Celine Area Schools administrative team, we want to take this opportunity to recognize each of you, our dedicated School Board members, for your time, dedication, commitment to the education and well-being of each student in the Celine Area Schools. We thank you for your service to our students and to our community.
Don't move the mic. No one could have predicted the challenges we have faced in these recent times: a global pandemic, a political divide that has fractured communities on all levels, unthinkable tragedies in nearby communities and local strife. Through it all, each of you have remained steadfast in your commitment to our students. Through every challenge, you have kept the best interest of our students paramount in your decision-making.
Your resolve, commitment to students, and unwavering support of our staff is deeply appreciated, not only because it's School Board Appreciation Month, but also because you deserve this recognition every month. Please accept this small token as we shower you with appreciation. Thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Now I'm wondering what this is. Thank you very much, and thank, thank you to all of you also for the hard work in our buildings and keeping the kids in school happy and safe. They, oh, thank you. Oh, fresh masks are good, fresh umbrella. Can we use these on a snow day, Steve? I'm just kidding. All right, thank you so much, we really appreciate your comments. Seeing no other public comment forms, our extended public comment request from Lauren has been moved to February 8th, per her request, so we will honor that. So I will move to response to previous public comment. As always, we like hearing from our community through SASBoard@celineschools.org. You can also use the Let's Talk app or Let's Talk on the Celine Area Schools website. And I just wanted to say, Steve and I had a really good meeting the other day collaborating on our agendas and planning into the late summer, which was a really good exercise for us. One year down and off to a good start. As always, any trustee is welcome to participate in agenda-making and submit any requests that they have for, for things to appear on the agenda, but I wanted to extend that to the community as well. We try to have things that are really pertinent to district business and that align with our strategic framework, and we have some really exciting topics like literacy and DEI and budget and some great things. So if you have any comments on that, we would like to hear that as well. Moving on to the approval of the agenda, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the agenda as is. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual Board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. A recommended motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed. Susan? Thank you. Candace, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing non-motion carries 6-0. Student showcase. Julianne, would you like to introduce our guest?
We have two people coming for TEDx, which, for those of you who know what a TED Talk is, it's pretty much that, but focusing on high school students.
Is the light green on the, on the mic? Okay, perfect. Whenever you're ready. We're just waiting for the slideshow to go.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for the opportunity to speak here. My name is Lizzie Andrew, and this is Neil Suchdeva. We are the lead organizers of TEDx Youth at Celine High School.
So what is TED? TED, which stands for Technology, Education, and Design, is an organization that is known for holding events with speakers from around the globe. And a TEDx event would be an independently organized version of a TED event. And it would be more relevant to the community in which it is hosted, and for schools with these events, they're known as TEDx Youth events.
So the community impact of this TEDx event is to expand the knowledge of our audience and to bring newfound creativity to Celine community. I would love these TEDx events to inspire students and with new ideas and be pursued in our own schools. Additionally, students could practice the art of public speaking and enhance their public, public presentation skills. Most of all, though, I want everybody to understand how amazing TED Talks are.
So what inspired us to organize a TEDx event? So for me, my fifth grade teacher showed me my first TED Talk. And as I listened, I became intrigued and mesmerized by these speakers' ability to share their stories with the world. So that night, I began watching TED Talk after TED Talk. And this sparked my love for these 15 to 20-minute videos. So currently, Lizzie and I still watch tons of talks. And after witnessing a TEDx event at Heritage School, we knew that we had to organize one for the high school to share our love of TED Talks with the Celine community. So short answer, what inspired us to want to organize a TEDx event is our want to share the beauty of TED with others.
So some key details from our event is that, right now, we are recruiting speakers from all ages and backgrounds to participate in our event. And we are, our application deadline is February 12th, and we are looking for a diverse range of speakers to speak at our event. The actual event will take place on April 13th, 2022, at the Celine High School Auditorium. And we're going to have ticket sales coming soon. Our theme of our event is going to be Point of View, or POV. We are looking for a diverse range of perspectives on different topics, whether they are common topics or unique ideas. So overall, we are looking for people who can share something with the Celine community and put their own perspective on it.
And this, and this is our contact information. You can email us at tedxlene@gmail.com, or find us on Instagram @TEDXcelene. Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Do me a favor and turn around just a little bit so your family can get a picture of you. I'm a mom too, I know how that goes. You're welcome. Oh, yeah, yeah. And then maybe stay up so trustees and Dr. Latch can ask questions or comments. Yeah, Michael?
Could you go back a slide, please, just so we have that, the Instagram stuff? That, great. I've done two TEDx talks, and if you, the, the last one was in Philadelphia, and I took the master class. So if you ever see the link for the TED Master Class, go through it, it's like an eight, eight steps to help hone your storytelling. And it, you know, as I said, I've given talks before, but that training was absolutely superb. So I'm so excited. I saw the Heritage ones as well. And I'm really, really looking forward to hearing what the Celine High School students have to say, so.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing this, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a quick question on the April 13th event. Do we know time? Is it during the day or in the evening?
It is, we were planning on having it an evening event, so it wouldn't interfere with the school day, and people could come after school.
Okay, you know, we're, we're a group of planners. We want to get it on calendars.
Yeah, for sure.
That's exciting, though. Great job. And I'm really, I love that you said it was inspired when you were in fifth grade at Heritage. That, that speaks well to, sort of, we're building from the elementarys to the middle school to the high school. So that's, that's great to hear that.
Just a quick question. I know you mentioned you're looking for a wide range of topics. Do you all have topics in mind, or have you thought about things that you would really love to see speakers come forward to, to share about?
Generally, we're just looking at common ideas, just on different perspectives. So stuff that's already been talked about, but like a different perspective on it. But we don't have like any, like, like set requirements at the moment.
We were hoping that our applicants would bring something new to light and share something with us.
Great, thank you.
I guess continuing on that front, like, tell people who you might be recruiting to right now, right, hopefully. How long are, do these talks, you know, have to be? They're not 45 minutes. I think these are five, 10-minute types of things. Am I correct on that?
Yes, correct. We were hoping for speakers to speak for around 10 to 15 minutes. I think that's like the typical length of a TED Talk.
Can you just tell us a little bit to, again, for people who are listening? And I have two high school students myself, too, so maybe I could, maybe I could twist an arm. But I'm curious about what the process is. They contact you to apply, but then, is there like, do they submit their talk ahead of time for approval, or is there support from, like, the Writing Center?
So generally, the application isn't asking them to submit their entire speech, but rather just a broad-eyed, like, idea of what they're planning on speaking about, and maybe its relation to the theme, which, as Lizzie mentioned, was point of view. But like, the application can be, yeah, you just email us, and we, we will send you the application, and then they just apply.
Yeah, and it can also be found on our Instagram account.
Okay, so relatively simple process?
Yeah.
And then, once they apply and they hear back from you,
Yes.
then they just move forward independently until the day of the event?
We were hoping to get beforehand probably like a rehearsal and stay in contact, obviously, with these speakers.
Awesome. Thanks for those details.
All right, thank you very much. I'm sure Julianne will help recruit people too, right? He's been voluntold. Yeah, there you go. Thank you very much. I know, I know we all are going to try to attend the event and really look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. Moving on to scheduled reports, Dr. Latch, staffing updates?
Okay, so I'll introduce people one at a time, but as many of you know, or most of you know, we've had a number of key staffing updates and moves throughout the district. We wanted to spend a few minutes introducing some of our new staff members, well, actually, one new staff member, and then some movement of different positions that we feel will strengthen the district in a number of different ways. So I know that Ashley and Jeff, connected with the Athletic Department, are still dealing with a situation over at the high school, which is pretty normal for some athletic events. So we're hoping they're able to make it here for, to introduce themselves, but if not, we'll, we'll be flexible with that. So let's start with Jay Grossman, who is our interim tech director. He's going to come up and say a few words about himself and this new position.
Hi. So I'm Jay Grossman, as he mentioned. So I've worked for the past 15 years in education. I started as a teacher, I moved into the technology field. I've come up to Celine, it's been my second year now. I've been working behind the scenes as the Systems Administrator for, under Troy Westink, and basically tasked with configuring, maintaining all the technology in place for the success of our students. And really, I'm just looking forward to this continued opportunity to keep moving forward with, with our vision for the next years to come. Thank you guys very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, and good luck. Important, important area right now.
Okay, and then next, I'd like to introduce Teresa Stager, who's our interim high school principal.
Hello, my name is Teresa Stager. I am the interim high school principal, as Dr. Latch mentioned. I started my career in education about 17, 16, 17 years ago as a music teacher, K-5, and high school in Anchor Bay, which is up in New Baltimore. I worked as a principal for a pre-K-8 Catholic school before I was here, and I've been here for six and a half years. I also did a little bit of, or five and a half years, I'm sorry. I also spent a little bit of time working in a human resources company as an implementation specialist. So that's what brought me here. I'm very excited for this opportunity. I'm really looking forward to continuing to connect and support the students and staff and families at the high school, continuing or creating a smooth transition for our Class of 2026 that are getting ready to start scheduling and coming into the high school, and just making this year the best that the students who are already there can possibly have. So I thank you for this opportunity very much.
Congratulations, Teresa.
Okay, and I see the Athletic Department has arrived, but we'll next introduce David Raft, who's our new Principal of Operations.
Thank you. Teresa said six and a half years. When you work with me, it feels longer. I want to say thank you. My name is David Raft, Principal of Operations. I'm been in the district for 26 years, 29 years in public education. I've spent 23 years in, as a building administrator in the district, in five of our six buildings. I was never asked to leave any of them, so I did. But I, just for that, I just want to clarify, but I was never asked to go to Pleasant Ridge either, so. But anyways, I'm excited about the opportunity to be kind of a boots-on-the-ground, working with our administrators, working with our staff and our students, with all the things that are going on today, and also getting to work with our Capitol Project team and the initiatives that are coming forward in Celine that way. So I'm really excited about this opportunity, and thank you very much. And I'm really excited about Teresa. Thank you.
Congratulations, David.
Okay, thank you, David. And I think I'm not just, the Athletic Department needs to get in, introduce, and then head back, because there's a big event at the high school tonight with the basketball game. With that said, we're going to introduce Ashley Mantha, our new Athletic Director, and Jeff Pike, our new Assistant AD. And they're going to come on up and say hello.
Hi, I am Ashley Mantha, new Athletic Director. I'm really excited to start. It's good to see you all. Coming from Anna Public Schools, where I taught for eight years, Health and PE, also 12 years varsity golf coach for boys and girls golf at Skyline. I was also two years in the Athletic Office prior to this. So really excited to bring all those experiences together at Celine, where we're going to bring, you know, collaboration, communication, and great teamwork to make this, continue this Celine excellence.
Hello all, I'm Jeff Pike, and I have been teaching here since 1997. Been in the Social Studies Department, teaching mostly juniors and seniors. And this is a, an opportunity, I'm really excited, to have a new connection with students. And so it's definitely going to be a different time and duties that I'll have in my career, but this is very, very exciting. And I'd like to thank Dr. Latch, and Mr. Ellis, and Mr. Raft, and Ms. Stager. And I've known Mr. Raft for a long, long time, and would count him as a mentor, so hopefully that will be a good thing going forward. But I appreciate all of your, all of your help and support through the years, so thank you very much.
It is a good thing. Ashley, welcome, and Jeff and Ashley, congratulations.
Ashley, I noticed Nipissing University and Memorial University.
Yes.
Are we speaking to a Canadian?
You are indeed.
Oh, well, I'm.
Did I find the sweet spot?
Well, it did indeed. York University, okay, so we're in the same, we're from, probably, we'll talk, we'll talk.
We'll talk, okay. I like this.
Canadian connections.
That's right. And go Hornets, I think it's basketball tonight, so good luck.
Anyway, so anyway, it's exciting to have this group on board, and we'll look for a bright future for all of them in these new roles. Okay, so we'll move right into the Continue to Learn update. Again, this is a combination of COVID-related mitigation types of strategies where we're at, but this version has a lot of real-life examples of how the students are coming back after break and really being engaged in a lot of real-world, project-based types of learning. A lot of exciting examples that I wanted to point out tonight. So this is still our, our snapshot of Washtenaw County, the seven-day totals through today. Still a lot of cases, but the positivity rate continues to drop. And across the state, we are starting to see that downturn in cases. That's also evidenced by our data that I'll, I'll show you in just, just a minute here. Again, this is the comparison of the counties, and we spoke about vulnerability level being low. That's still the case in Washtenaw. You look at the infection rates, lower. You also look at the positive test rate is lower than a lot of surrounding counties, and a higher vaccination rate as well, all helping with the vulnerability of the county itself. So we're going to talk a little bit about the dashboard. Again, Anna put together a new and improved version of this. And I do want to point out that when we get community suggestions, that we think, hey, those are good suggestions, we change and we add them. So we had a public comment about what's the perspective of, you know, what do these cases mean in terms of, well, how many staff members are at the high school? How many staff, how many students go to the high school? So if you look at this, it's pretty hard to read, but my eyes are great. 170-ish staff members and what, 1680 students, or something in that range? Anyway, the point is, you put this in perspective, and you see that currently, we only have two staff that were positive and three that are now quarantined in, in isolation. 13 positive cases on Monday, and 23 total that were in, or in isolation out of, you know, the 1,680 students and, you know, almost 200 staff members. So in perspective, this is coming down. When we were coming off winter break on that Monday, the number of students positive was 80. I remember that particular slide. And Karen Hervey, our wonderful district nurse, always says that, you know, Monday is the biggest day where it comes back with learning about some new positive cases. So we still have significant amount of infection, but it is on the way down, at least our data points towards that. The other thing I wanted to add up is the, this was just the district summary from yesterday. The dashboard posted at 6 o'clock last night. I just went through and added it up throughout the whole district. So when we're talking about upwards of 5,000 students, there are 66 across the district. So what you're seeing is that a larger percentage are at the high school. And then you see some of the other stats, too. New positive students that were reported on Monday is 32, and so forth with the positive staff reported and the, those that are in isolation. So to put it in perspective, cases are coming down, and in the grand scheme of things, this is a smaller number than we had right after winter break. Another, some new developments, too, is that health insurances are now, or health insurance companies are now required to cover the cost of at-home tests. It's been an issue, they're expensive. For those that are trying to find them, they're limited in supply. So in addition, you can access free COVID tests, where you just go online, and I, I did this the other day, it was pretty simple. Just typed it in, and they'll send four out. I haven't gotten them yet, but that's, that's the process to do that. Now, there's a lot on this slide, so now we're moving into some of the ways in which we are trying to move through the COVID pandemic and return to what I would say is a more normalized school year. And here, here's an example. Because we've had feedback that we want our students to be able to return to doing some of the extracurricular, or if not all of the extracurricular activities that they, they love and, over the last few years, haven't been able to do. So clubs and organizations and trips have organized to return to being able to offer some of these trips and so forth that, that our students really get a lot out of. And largely, in the yellow over there, that's our philosophy, that this is a, this is a large part of their academic experience, to be able to go on a variety of trips. And, and I also added tournaments, because when we talk about, you know, Science Olympiad, for example, they do travel around, most recently at a tournament in Ohio. We want our kids to be able to have that experience, but we do want to keep it as safe as we possibly can. So what we have here is Lori Dawson, who's our Clubs and Organizations Coordinator, has put together a lot of parameters around the specific trips. And they all are a little different, they're nuanced a little bit differently. And it depends where they're going, because there's different requirements based on, if you're going to Chicago, if you're going to DC. And some of the general rules are proof of vaccination status for these trips that they go out of state. Now, one area that parents would ask about camp is not, fifth grade camp is not requiring a proof of vaccination, but when you're going to some of these other areas, they are. And it just depends on where, where they're headed to. A negative COVID test 48 hours before travel, and that mask required in all these locations. So different ways of providing mitigation strategies to keep students safe. And of course, any trip is, is certainly optional, but we are trying to do our best to make it as safe as possible and then still allow students to have the experience. So do you mind clicking on the, the trip schedule? I just wanted to give the scope of it. Again, hard to read, but it, it shows that what Lori helps coordinate is a variety of different trips and organizations, who they're working with, when the trips are occurring. So it is an organized process, often working with travel agencies and, and so forth. So we feel good about returning, being able to return to that. Now, of course, when these trips actually take place later on, if there were some situation that wouldn't allow them to travel, if there is some major spike in cases that DC is not allowing students to come through museums and things like this, okay, then we would make those adjustments. But what you can see is that we are trying to have those experiences for our kids, and we'll continue forward with that. Okay, thanks, Anna. Oh, there we go, okay. So we're getting back to continually putting the slide on, because I do want to keep pointing out the building goals for this year, so that you can connect back to the slides that I'm about to review, and, and you'll see a lot of this in there. Reinvigorating the focus on the compass, personalizing educational experiences, centering components critical to social, emotional support and wellness, and authenticity and connection to real-world experiences. So, most recently, on Friday, January 14th, we had our Celine Area Schools Symposium. This is professional development for our well-over-300-strong teaching staff. And what I wanted to point out is, this is the professional development plan for the year, and it's focused around the EJAT, which is the Equity and Justice Assessment Tool that we use. And it's really based around these six areas. And so what we did for this latest round- And so, what we did for this latest round of professional development with our teaching staff is, they were choosing areas of focus and organizing into collaborative groups. So, they had two different sessions. And so, for example, if I were a teacher that was in the group of knowledge, bias, and beliefs, we were doing professional development together. And then if I chose policies and procedures, we were doing that professional development together. Solely organized on Zoom by Cara Davis and the Teaching and Learning Team that did a wonderful job of collaborating together, because our staff is really eager to talk about all this and have some planning time around it. Now, this is one of the issues that we've experienced this year, which is problematic. In the past, we were able to get subs to release teachers to have some professional development time. And if you recall, last year, we had asynchronous Fridays, which allowed staff time to get together to discuss and work and plan. This year, we're struggling, because we, we know we can't get additional subs for this, because we're using our own teachers often to substitute. And so, we're needing to get creative as to, well, where are we going to find time for staff for professional development? We're talking about, you know, providing more time this summer and stipends for staff to be able to do that. But then next year, we really do have to look at, what are other ways we can get more time for staff to work together? Because it's not as easy as saying that we're going to say to staff, well, they're going to do everything after school. They're exhausted, especially in this, in this environment where they're sometimes working through their planning periods to cover, cover teachers. So, it certainly is an issue that we're, we're addressing, but we're, we're looking forward to solutions. Okay, we'll, we'll jump back. Thank you. So, another area that we're focused on is a staff spotlight campaign. Anna is doing a terrific job of organizing profiles of many of our staff members with a long-term goal down the road over a series of years to really highlight all our staff. And so, this is the frame around what it looks like, Teaching and Learning Spotlight. This particular one is for one of our heritage teachers, Jesse Spicer, who is a fifth-grade teacher and has taken an active lead with project-based learning. And so, Ben and Anna have collaborated to create some videos around some of this work, too. And we're going to go ahead and look at a really good one right now. Anyway, so those are really nice. And this throwing a short video up to promote a teacher's classroom is great. It just, it really shows what's going on in there and the collaborative nature of it all. Here's another great example of student engagement, an elementary example with Mary Ledford in the Pleasant Ridge Media Center. This is really, I think, spectacular. More or less, what she's doing is getting the students ready for the Winter Olympics, but really bringing in this aspect of learning in so many different, different regards, about another nation where, you know, China is where it's taking place this year, and getting students back and focused around, you know, the entire world coming together to work on something together. And, you know, obviously, we've talked about, you know, that we're in a divisive nature of society at times, and Mary's focused on, on bringing kids together to learn about this, lots of different aspects of this. So, if we click through this slide deck, kids are going to learn about history of Olympics, and this is again in media. Learn about China itself, using Pebble Go, which Ben was pointing out, one of his favorite tools. It largely allows students to focus in on material that's at their level, which is important, because sometimes when they're searching and trying to find material, it's so impossible when you're just doing that general worldwide web search. And then talking about specifically the Olympics and the schedule. And then Pebble Go and how to use it, so that you can go and brainstorm and explore athletes. And then, and then sort of this final celebration, where they're going to go to do this Reading Olympics phase, where they're able to get medals by doing certain tasks, reading an e-text, or, you know, doing a collaborative activity together. So, it's just a neat example of how our teachers go above and beyond the call of duty to engage students. Okay, we'll move to the next one. Here's a great middle school example that we, it was passed on to me the other day, and that is, in Woods class, Woodshop, Woodshop Two, this class in particular, they were looking for ways to help the students within their own building. So, they went down to the Life Skills Room and asked, you know, what do they need? And they wanted a new snack cart. Life Skills students often to learn about money and how a store works will go around the building and sell various items to staff primarily. And they built and designed a new Life Skills snack cart. The other thing that's, I think, speaks a lot about how kids really love hands-on activities is Woods is a very, very popular class. And sometimes we say, well, you know, that's, that seems like a, a class that happened a long time ago, it's not as applicable. Our students love it, and they, they want to work with their hands. They, they talk about that all the time. So, I do think it speaks to students want to, they want hands-on learning, they want, they want project-based learning, and they will seek it out. Alternative High School, a couple of good examples that Principal Melcher has passed on. One is sort of teamwork challenge, and some of these took place earlier, but a teamwork challenge with Mr. Shuby, who's a school social worker, to build a tall structure. And then they do do a lot with cooking and gardening, and you can see the example on the right, harvesting some of the herbs from the garden, which they have in the, so that example happened earlier. But they, they, they do this all the time. And I think a real important part of alternative education, if you look in the center here, is that, you know, we have students that are on, going in different paths. Yes, we have some students that are going to college, but we also have a number of students that are going right into the workforce. And it's important in the alternative education program and our high school to make sure that we provide a lot of different paths, so that our students can collaborate and be ready for whatever their path is, and not just a one-size-fits-all path. For high school art in particular, we've got a nice example about a mural.
Got my essay written. And I've been working on it for.
Anna is going to move forward to the, I think it's a 307 mark or something like that, because they wanted you to watch this whole thing. It's about a two-and-a-half-minute clip on what the murals around the high school mean that the art classes have designed over the years.
For about a week. So, now I'm going to show you how I use Grammarly to add.
Good morning, Hornets.
So, we wish him the best in his future endeavors.
We see murals in the halls every day, but few students take the time to learn their history.
Well, Max Watkins has, and now he's here to tell you all about them.
The first floor of Celine High School is gorgeously detailed by beautiful murals that bring color and life to the halls. Despite walking past them every day, I wasn't quite sure where they come from. In my quest to learn more about them, I turned to Ms. Schumacher, a teacher in the art department.
It's kind of a unique class, because our, our purpose is to create and beautify these murals. So, first of all, it kind of transforms a space. And with that, it starts conversations, and it even causes people, as they're walking by, to just slow down and kind of appreciate what's, what's around them and take a look at their surroundings. On a personal note, I see how hard the students work on these. So, it makes me so proud to see student work being displayed publicly, and that's a big deal.
Ms. Koppelman is another art teacher who is involved in the project, so I took my journey to the halls to get a more detailed explanation.
So, can you tell us anything about these, these murals we've got going on here?
Sure, sure. So, the mural that I'm standing here in front of was the first mural that went up here at the building. And the idea and the concept is that this is an overview of the Celine community and things that make our community unique and special. In the cows here on the mural, some of the students put in their initials as part of the cow print. This mural is more about the Celine High School community and what students are involved in, different types of clubs and activities, sports. So, this is our last section. Most likely, we will take what's happening here on this side with the honeycomb and start to wrap that around to this side. But what else will be put into the mural, that will be up to the students.
Mr. Pickett is a school social worker, which suggests that the murals have mental health implications as well.
Pre-Pre Depression Awareness is an organization through Washtenaw County, through University of Michigan, where multiple schools throughout the county work to reduce stigma in high schools and now middle schools around mental illness. They put on a campaign each year. And, and two years ago, they came with the idea to paint a mural, you know, be expressing yourself through art. Anytime you have some sort of medium that allows you to express yourself and how you're feeling from a mental health perspective, I think is great, because I think the more that it's out in the open, people are more willing to talk about things.
The paintings that line the corridors of this building not only bring color to the learning environment, they also serve as a reminder that art feeds the soul. I'm Max Watkins, reporting for SHS Today.
These murals are a great outlet for students to express themselves while adding a pop of color to the halls.
All right. Thank you, Anna. So, yeah, just a good example of how, you know, we talk a lot about student-led. That's a really nice example, and Mrs. Koppelman mentioned at the end, and you say, well, what's going to be on the next mural? That's for the students to decide. And that speaks to this, the importance of, you know, you want the high school to be their high school, and that they, they have a lot of input on what happens there. Another great example of things that are getting ready to happen this weekend is our music program. Wonderful at the high school, wonderful everywhere, actually. But here's a couple of really neat examples, that they go to this Michigan Music Conference, where certain students are invited based on how well they perform throughout the year to have this honor of playing in all-state band orchestra and choir performances. And then our own Matthew Brier is going to be performing. And then Sarah Price, our choir teacher, she will be directing the choir there. And I like, I like how they phrase this, "It's essentially equal to being asked to coach the Pro Bowl in football," was their thing, to say, hey, they, they try to take the best coaches to have them coach the Pro Bowl. That's largely the honors that are, you know, given or earned by our staff. And it just speaks to how important the music program is. Another great example of engagement doesn't always happen in school. And we talk about the importance of our clubs and organizations. Here's a really good, strong club that's been on the move and on the rise, and that's our, our Science Olympiad teams. And I'll say, it's not just the high school. But the high school recently, we talk about the importance of being able to go to tournaments. They've done not only in-person tournaments, they've done some virtual ones as well. So, they've done, most recently, a sixth-place finish at Solon, Ohio, which is largely termed one of the best Science Olympiad schools in the United States. And so, I'm very proud of their efforts. They spend a lot of time working on this. This is, for a lot of the students, the sport of mind, and they do a terrific job. The picture there, though, is a virtual tournament they did, where they had to coordinate video calls back and forth, and they finished, that was earlier in the year, fourteenth out of two-hundred-and-fifty teams in this national satellite tournament. It just speaks to how well they do and how important it is that we have parent volunteers that help support it. In this case, Natha Kella and his team of volunteers, they do a terrific job and spend all sorts of time with it. Here's also the follow-up that I just got today from the middle school Science Olympiad team that talks about how well they just did at, you know, this most recent example at a, at a recent Birmingham tournament. And that's with Lisa and John Spencer. They are volunteers that help coordinate those programs, both at the heritage level and the middle school level. I also did want to provide a safety and security update, because we had a small group of us here the other day, which was good. We were able to talk through some of the things we're working on and wanted to keep this at the forefront. There's a tendency with, you know, what's going on with COVID, that we might lose sight of it when we have, you know, most recently, this variant and the rise in COVID cases. We didn't want to slip and, and not have safety and security at the forefront of what we're doing. So, in conjunction with Carol and Kurt, we coordinated a small community conversation. We had both the Celine Police Department and the Department of Public Safety from Pittsfield Township here, talking about the jurisdictional agreement, which is actually very, very important when you are going through a time when you need a lot of cooperation and you need it to happen quickly. We saw that example on that Friday at the high school, when we had that scare, sort of some false, false scares about violence that could occur at the high school. They were working together, both Pittsfield Township and the City of Celine, to make sure that they were not going to allow jurisdictional issues. And sometimes people say, well, isn't that something you just see on like CSI or they talk of jurisdiction? That's a real thing, that if they need to go interview a student that's in Pittsfield Township, and it's a Celine City of officer, they would have to get permission first. And this work that's just recently happened has formed an agreement now that we don't have to deal with any of that. They don't have to deal with any of that. They just act, and it, it will help speed up the process for the safety of the entire district. We also talked about student resource officers. We have one at the high school in Harvest in Pittsfield Township, Lamar Gassaway. He's doing a tremendous job building relationships with students. And we are having further discussions about whether there is a need to have another SRO at the City of Celine level to protect and support our other buildings. I will say, I was just recently on a legislative breakfast call, and we are hearing from, you know, like Jeff Irwin and other legislators saying they do support, you know, trying to make sure that districts can fund additional SROs. That was something he mentioned. So, it is certainly something that we, we are looking at. And then we also went over the same safety and security plan that we did for the Board of Education the other day, so we can make sure that we're answering questions. Those that attended do have some questions that we'll continue to answer. Publish a frequently asked question document in the very near future. And then the other thing that's going on right now is that Assistant Superintendent Alice has set up Alice Training that's ongoing. Jennifer had asked about whether Board of Ed could attend any of those sessions. Absolutely, and can send out the schedule. If you wanted to attend one of them, they're occurring after school, about a two-hour training, if, if that's something that you are interested in. And then finally, we'll end with this. We talk about creating these engaging environments, and kids love coming to school. Well, you know, part of this is the dedication of our bus drivers, our transportation department. It's really kind of incredible in that they are very short-staffed, but they somehow figure out how to deal with that day in and day out. When other districts are canceling runs often, because they don't have enough drivers, the Celine Schools has been able to, you know, persevere through, and it's largely based on the dedication of this group. So, I was able to ride with both Rita and Ken on two separate days, because I do think it's important that I'm understanding what's it like to be a bus driver, what, you know, what are they working on, and how are they building relationships with kids and whatnot? And then I was going to do another run this Friday with a bus that has a lift to help with students that need greater support in that regard. So, that's, that's the update. Does anybody have any questions? Well, I have a lot. I don't have any questions, but I just have a lot of thoughts. So, first of all, this presentation, I have to tell you, just makes me tremendously proud just to be a Hornet. I mean, I think about all the things that I've seen in this forty-five-minute session. I think about the tremendous leaders who are stepping up and answering the call to duty here. And, and, you know, David Raff came up there and said like, well, you know, I've kind of done whatever they've asked. Yeah, he has, because that's who he is. And so, now these other people are all being asked to.
And so now these other people are all being asked to do other things. And we've had people who have made other moves to help us when needed. So anyway, so I see that, you know. And, you know, I agree. You said earlier that our teachers go above and beyond for our students. You know, I see them engaged with symposiums. And I think that choice piece is super important to that. So I'm happy to see that teachers and staff members are having professional development that is engaging to them and that they can then have live, right? And have those conversations. And I think that's a really important thing, you know. I saw about, just now, about bus drivers and their dedication, their flexibility. I saw about, you know, the fun things that our educators are providing for our students. Those murals, I agree with you, the music programs and art programs, they do enhance the mental health and wellness of our students. And so like, I see that. And so I just want to recognize those things. I want to talk, you know, we have students who are excelling at Science Olympia, but then there are people who are helping them to do that. So anyway, I just saw a lot of things here. And the last thing I'll say is I just went through Alice Training and it's heavy and it's a difficult thing to do, but it's an important thing to do. And I acknowledge our staff. And I guess the last thing I'll say to that is, you know, to thank our staff for being there for our students and for doing all these things and going above and beyond to provide trips for them when you're being flexible and changing from, you know, Toronto to Chicago so students can have these experiences. And I just want to say thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I guess I'll just echo too. Just a big congratulations to our administrative team and their flexibility. I think especially as I'm thinking about the high school, Teresa. I know personally that I have two sophomores that are going to continue to have an excellent experience. And I'm thrilled that you'll be with them this year and, you know, into the future. So thank you for taking on that role. And don't let David's big shoes throw you off at all. I'm confident that you've got that. And I will say that from experience, working with David for six and a half years must have felt much longer. But I also want to congratulate David. I thought we had an agreement, David. I thought that we were going to see the twins through. So Teresa, David might be around a little bit more often. But just kidding. I couldn't think of a better person. When I heard that news, I started thinking back and thought, I counted them up too, David, and thought, gosh, it's just Pleasant Ridge. So Kenyatta can expect you over there, I'm sure, so that you can get to know that building because it's an incredible place, too. So Jeff Pike, when I heard that, my daughter. We are Team Pike. Jeff had an incredible influence on my daughter and her experience. So I think that the integrity and the experience that he is going to be bringing to the athletic office is just so important to our young people who are participating in those things. Really excited about our new athletic director being in Ann Arbor Schools. I'm hearing a lot of people who are sad to see her go. So I think that's a win for the Hornets. So congratulations to all of you. Thinking back to the video of the art and thinking about Sarah Price and her influence on our kiddos. Ms. Koppelman, I have no idea how she has done this, but she has created a true artist in Drew Miller. So it's been exciting to see a program that I maybe didn't have as much connection to before, but to see that through the eyes of our kids and then to see it demonstrated in this video. As we walk through the schools, I see those murals. But learning a little bit more about them makes them even more meaningful and connects us even more to our kids. Yeah, just it's, I think like Brad had said, this is a really exciting thing to see. I don't want it to produce a false narrative that times aren't extremely difficult right now for our kids and for our staff. But I think that what this is showing is that even despite those difficulties and despite the things that are coming at us that we never anticipated and were never trained to do, teachers are rising to the occasion, bus drivers are rising to the occasion and creating an experience that makes kids want to come to school each day. So for that, we appreciate their work.
But one thing I did want to add about that is, you know, when I visit the, because one of the things I am trying to do each week is go into schools and make notes of things I'm observing in classrooms. Well, one thing I see all the time, though, and I see it in the high school comments, I'm going to use Julian as an example. They're having some time to socialize and have fun and enjoy. It's a positive environment. And I like to be able to see that. A lot of smiling kids, having a good time. School can be fun, as Brad mentioned. So anyway, it's just a good, a positive environment. We got to keep building on it because it's certainly a tough time. But, you know, students and the staff are doing a great job.
One thing maybe just for a future COVID report, or I guess not COVID report, but return to learn or continue to learn plan. Something that we're experiencing for the first time at our house is the protocol for athletes. So I wonder if that was something that I didn't know a lot about. And so when we got the message from the coach explaining that protocol, I think that that might be something that might be helpful for people in the future just to anticipate that, you know, if they do have to participate in that protocol, they'll know the steps to take ahead of time.
Yeah, that's a good point. Because that's a more, you know, one of those higher-risk activities. So they do look at the quarantine and isolation differently. That's a good point. I can touch base on that next time. Yeah, trustee used it.
I would like to add to that as well. My family experienced the early childhood special education program. Also, it was 10 days, seven and 10 days, being, you know, a vulnerable population, under five. And so, yeah, that process was different as well. I was like, wait a minute, we just went over this. What's going on?
Lesser quarantine, yeah, that's true. Yeah, and I did, right, last time I spent more time on, you know, saying most of the situations are low risk, but these situations, as you're describing, are considered more of the high risk. I can make a note to touch base on that more next time.
Hopefully, the other reports will continue to get slimmer and slimmer. So then maybe some of these specialized reports will help others, so.
Yeah, that's good news. And Nurse Hervey did stop me today when I saw her in the building. And she did say she is having less volume, or they are. So, I mean, that's a good thing, you know. So, okay.
Dr. Lotz, I just want to say I appreciate you boiling down all of your observations into these continue-to-learn reports. Over the last year, as you remember, we had a lot of concerns about learning loss, COVID gap, that sort of thing. We've read this morning about Omicron misses, things like that. And I know, all I can do is amplify or pile on to what trustee Miller and treasurer Gerby said. These are excellent examples of us doing as much as we possibly can to get the kids the best education they possibly can get in this time and beyond. So I appreciate the reports a great deal. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. And I think it also does show the importance of, most of those activities that were shown today, you can't do virtually, right? We've talked a lot about how we want to be able to be in person. Many of these examples show, you know, painting a mural and some of these other things, the hands-on materials. That's important for our students. So we want to keep doing that in as safe an environment as possible.
Just real quick, I just wanted to also say thank you for bringing a smile. I love seeing videos. It's like we're in the building. And the high school students do such a wonderful job producing those videos. And Anna, thank you for the staff spotlight. And going into Jessie's classroom, I remember those dioramas. And it was really nice to see that. So great highlighting of positive things that are going on in the buildings. Couple of ideas. We have had musical performances in the past at board meetings, small. If that's a safe activity sometime before the end of school, it would be great to welcome some of those groups back to the Board of Ed meetings. I know, obviously, we've had a deliberate pause on things like that. But something to think about. And then I kind of look at these shelves behind us and I know what's in woodshop up on the shelves. And I'm looking at Laura. And I totally agree. That class is so popular. Mr. Gillow is so popular. It would be wonderful to add some kind of collections from the woods class and the seventh and eighth grade students to our shelves if we could.
I'm sure we can accommodate some of those things.
If they want to part with them, I know they're really proud.
I would think they'd like the possibility of them being displayed back here.
Exactly. We don't keep anything if they want it back. Trail, yeah. All right.
Well, that's for you to negotiate.
Says the treasurer.
That's for you to negotiate.
He's thinking revenue generation already for the kids. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Moving on to schedule report for Board of Education Committee assignments. This is just a procedural thing. It happens once a year. After we have our organizational meeting, the president is tasked with forming the annual committees for the year. I just wanted to be transparent with our community and let them know that the information has been posted to the website. I wanted to thank this team for their really hard work last year on the committees that they were serving on. And I just wanted to share kind of what the design criteria was that went into committees because it's something I try to be very thoughtful about for the trustees and for the district. We receive, I receive feedback over the past week from trustees as well as the past year on various committees. I try to think about the time that's spent on committees. So several of our committees always meet monthly. Some examples of that are finance and policy. Those are two good examples of that. But we have several others that do as well. And so I just try to wait how much time trustees are spending away from their families and their careers and their other tasks and make sure that that's a fair distribution of time. Also think about the talents on the team. We have a lot of individuals that have wonderful backgrounds. So thinking about what they like and what they excel in. And then also having a conversation with Steve and perceived needs within the district. So just wanted to let everybody know kind of how those were created, that it is something that happens annually and that we will be getting a new trustee hopefully pretty soon, roughly around the February 7th or 8th timeframe. And we'll talk about that in a minute. So what will happen is that person, depending on what their time is and what their talents are, will join us on those committees very soon. And that's all I had to say. Did anyone have anything they wanted to say on committees? Okay, perfect. Moving forward, we have one action item tonight. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the middle school new course proposal as submitted by Principal Laura Washington.
Anyone?
Anyone? We just have to approve a motion and then we can move forward.
That's okay. I'll make that motion.
Okay, Jenny, thank you. Second.
Second.
Candace, thank you. And here is Principal Washington again. Thank you.
Oh, let's try that again. Hi again. So we're going to introduce the intro to Issues of Equity at Celine Middle School. So this course is designed to give an opportunity for students, specifically eighth graders who are interested in social justice and equity issues in our community, to have a place to discuss and learn about those issues. As we continue to see ignorance and behavioral issues around racism, sexism, homophobia, and other issues of isms in our school frequently, we think and hope honest conversations and learning around these topics can create student leaders in our school that can minimize and eventually eliminate these issues. This course will be heavily discussion-based and centered around historical and current events. Students will discuss, research, and analyze and convey issues that affect their community and the region that surrounds them. The goal is to help students to become global citizens who can create connections between their social environment and other issues to develop solutions to better their world, their communities, and region. It will not teach critical race theory. This course aligns with the middle school C3 history framework, Social Studies State Standards, particularly around perspectives. Historical understanding requires recognizing this multiplicity of points of view in the past. It also requires recognizing that perspectives change over time so that historical understanding requires developing a sense of empathy with people in the past whose perspectives might be different from those of today. By looking at the multitude of perspectives of the past, we can better understand events that transpired and gain greater understanding of events happening in the present. When connected to our compass, we're looking at attributes of collaborative leader, ethical and responsible citizen, and globally connected students. So thank you for your time.
Great, thanks, Laura. Any questions or comments for Laura?
Yeah.
Yes, Susan.
This is amazing. Thank you for the people who initiated this and brought it together. I think it's super important, you know, things that you do hear about negatively going on in the district, you know, at the middle school as well. I think it's an important conversation to have and, you know, develop leaders and peers. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Laura, this is, oh, were you going to say something, Candace? An elective?
It is.
So this would be alongside other electives like woodshop that we mentioned tonight or music or things like that? So it would be a choice for students?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
I had a question about the, so I see that there's a fee listed here for what you think supplemental tax will cost and things like that. But I'm curious about support for the teachers that have stepped forward to lead this for training for them or, you know, additional supports to make sure that they're up on the latest as it relates to equity issues.
Absolutely. So, you know, we have a very close connection to the ISD with our social justice. And both of the teachers have gone through advanced and they always have access to other classes. So, for example, I just took a class last week on celebrations and images. And so I know they constantly have access to that. So we would definitely propose that they continue in their learning as well as other conferences that they would want to go to.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Brad, did you have something?
Yeah, I have a small question. I just, it's more like a logistics thing. I think this class is tremendous and I support it all the way. Like, they have trimesters one and three highlighted, but not two.
They should have two in there as well.
Okay, so it will be the whole.
It's a year-long class. So the way the middle school schedule works is we are on an A-B schedule. So all of our classes run all year long. So they will meet every other day. So, yeah, two should have been highlighted as well. Technical glitch.
All right, thank you.
Can I point out just one really quick thing for Secretary Jones? I was going to tell you that one of the pieces of the contract for teachers is a really nice stipend for professional development. And that is not something that is typical in a contract. So it is something that I think Celine should be really proud of, that they provide that opportunity for teachers to have an opportunity to attend both local and even national conferences because of that stipend and those funds. In addition to other, I'm sure, Title II funds and things like that. But that is something that I miss a lot.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other comments or questions, we will move to vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. We look forward to hearing with the Class of 2027 things next year.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Laura. Moving on to our only discussion item tonight is board trustee vacancy. I just wanted to kind of, the trustees all know this, but thought it would be a good opportunity from the table to let our community know where we're at in the process and kind of steps moving forward. And there's also a lot of logistics. So just wanted to give any trustee the opportunity to give feedback if they went through the process last year and want to provide any feedback or if they have any comments, questions, or discussion items for the group. So just to let you know where we're at in the process, the notice of interest form is on the Celine Area Schools website. It will be live until February 3rd at 5:00 a.m. or 5:00 p.m. 5:00 p.m. And then what will happen next is Secretary Jones, the next day, will create an email for all of the applicants and a sign-up genius where they'll be able to go and elect their particular interview time. Last year when we did this, we did start at 5:30 instead of 6:30. So I just wanted to make sure that that was okay with all of the trustees at the table and Julian, if that's okay. I know you might have to check your schedule with the games and stuff like that. But gets us started a little bit early, depending on how many applicants we get. So I heard that that was a good thing to do last year. One thing we also did last year was our board representative, Noah Socha. Hope he's doing really well in school. Did a great job helping us with interviewing the candidates. We talk about being student-led in the school district. So if Julian is interested, maybe he can help us take lead on running through the questions for our candidates. I can kind of facilitate the meeting and open it as usual, but you could really have a nice chance to interact with the candidates. Um, we'll have to touch base also on the final questions and make sure that everybody gets input here and make sure that our student representative has input to that, those questions as well. Um, intended decision will be taken. Uh, it, it, it could occur. Um, one trustee had, had brought up the fact that we can make a motion with quorum at any time. So it could happen on, uh, the February 7th. Um, it will go on an agenda item for the 8th. If action occurs on the 7th, then we will revise the agenda as printed on the 8th. Uh, onboarding for the new trustee hopefully would take, uh, place the next week. That's usually done in a two-hour stretch and anyone is welcome to participate in that. Each trustee or administrator is given a, um, a topic to kind of brief the new trustee on. Sometimes that's policy, sometimes that's superintendent board relations, things like that. Um, and then the swearing in will occur on our agenda on February 22nd. And that, that date is 2/22/22. I thought that was kind of cool. Um, and so hopefully that, that gives our new trustee a, a piece of good luck there on their, their first day. Um, did any other, uh, were there any other comments, questions, pieces of feedback from the process last year? Anything anybody would like to highlight either for the public or have a discussion at the table about with regards to vacancy? You guys are easy on me tonight. All right, great. So, um, we'll look forward to Secretary Jones taking over the next step on February 4th. And we'll see you here back at 5:30 in an open meeting on February 7th. Um, moving to administration updates, Dr. Lott.
Uh, thank you. So, uh, three fairly short ones tonight. So, uh, first one is we're looking to bring back our listening sessions. Um, a couple of years ago, when we were working through a couple visibly racist incidents that occurred in the community, we had a number of well-attended, um, very, I would say fruitful, collaborative, real discussions with the community at a variety of different locations throughout the district. We were at the senior center, Pleasant Ridge Elementary School, a number of different venues. And we want to, we want to bring that back. We've tried to recreate that with the Bridge to Civility sessions, but those were online through Zoom. And although I would say they were successful, they didn't quite have the same collaborative feel to them where we had lots of people in the community coming out in these various, um, buildings. And then we, we spread out into, uh, rooms and we could still do that again when we feel like, um, you know, we're looking at March or April with the notion that we feel we're going to have a lower case count. Now, if that doesn't take place, we may push it off even further. But, um, we want to recreate those because there was just such a, a good vibe, um, of people coming together and being able to talk and, and about, you know, finding common ground and, and what we need to do to help better unite the community. So we are looking at doing that, uh, in March, March and/or April, depending upon how, how safe we feel it is to do so. I also wanted to point out that there's a lot of hard work going on right now into the, into a needs assessment around future capital projects in all our Celine Area Schools buildings. And what would that look like for a proposed millage renewal? We're going to talk more about that in the near future, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody's up to speed on a needs assessment has taken shape now and has taken place. And then we'll be bringing back different, um, ideas to the community so that they can have input on, uh, the value of, of those various ideas, um, throughout the district. And then finally, I mentioned it earlier, but it does appear that, you know, our case count is, is going down. And I just wanted to remind everybody that that doesn't mean that we would immediately remove, uh, the mask mandate. First off, there still is a mask mandate within Washington County and we plan on following that. And we are in, um, concert with what they have already said would be the next steps. Washington County Health Department has said that if we were to move into a moderate transmission phase, which it's a ways off, but if that were to happen, then we could enact the plan that we developed at the beginning of the year that says that when we're in a moderate or low transmission phase, we would make masks optional. So I just wanted to kind of give everybody an update. We're certainly not at that phase yet, but I just wanted to remind everybody of that. So. Okay, that's it. That was a little longer than I thought, but.
That's great. Thanks Steve. Uh, Julian, would you like to give yours?
Well, uh, Dr. Lott talked about it, uh, in his simple school update. Um, just from the high school, uh, what I've seen, uh, it's, I'm not sure what a parent would expect from, for a student in a global pandemic, considering they probably have not gone through that unless they are a teacher. But it is so far this, this trimester in particular has been, um, it's, it's, it's the most normal I've felt in quite some time in school. In fact, you know, Dr. Lott walked, walked by me at lunch and I was just like, oh, I wonder if he's going to take notes of all of me and the boys laughing and throwing trash at each other. But. But besides that, like, and from that aspect, you know, being able to sit together at lunch, have, being able to have a huge group of people, um, well, huge, is nice. So ultimately that, that's all I have to say. School's starting to feel more normal and, um, I give all the, all the props to our board and teachers and faculty. So, thank you very much.
Thanks Julian. Uh, any trustees that would like to make comment? Yeah, Brad?
I have one item. Um, so on behalf of the Finance Committee that I'm lucky enough to chair right now with Candace and Jennifer, uh, we want to invite the community to a conversation around ESER funds. ESER funds being the federal emergency funds. And, uh, there are some deadlines and some things that we have to meet in order to be compliant. And so on February 3rd, Thursday from 6 o'clock until 7:30, uh, our goal is to get together and have what we want to, we, what we really want to have is we want to have an interactive meeting with, with participants, with the community, where we talk about, uh, what are the things we're doing right now to spend those funds? And also a brainstorming of what are good ways for us to, to spend those, those funds and to be good stewards of the, those funds and what have you. So that is going to happen on Thursday, February the 3rd from 6:00 to 7:30 at night. And I invite the community to join us in those discussions.
And I'll, I'll add one thing to that, Brad. Anna's getting the promotional materials ready to be able to send that out via social media and that there is a, um, signup form we'd like to gather from the community because we are going to be putting people in small groups and we want to try to, you know, space them out. We're going to be in the high school media center. So, um, we're looking forward to it.
All right, great. Any other trustees? Candace, yeah?
Yeah, just wanted to share that I had the opportunity to, uh, participate in and join the school safety session and, and really appreciated that. Also, um, had the opportunity to see, uh, trustee McVeigh or Vice, Vice President McVeigh, um, in action at the WASB legislative session and his, uh, role as introducing that and welcoming everyone to that session. So that was, that was great and learned a lot about some of the legislative priorities, um, as it relates to education. So looking forward to staying, staying on top of that and ensuring that we are, um, in alignment with it. So, thanks.
Uh, thank, I can pile on top of that. Thank you very much. First of all, um, I, yeah, it's been a busy, uh, week or so. Trustee Isaf, will you talk about High Point at some point? Cause I don't have much to say. I wrote a few things on Twitter, but your comments were so much better that, anyway. Um, on January 19th, we had the Coalition for Quality Community got met and there is a lot going on. We are gearing up in this community for, uh, warmer weather. And I heard from the Fair People, Summer Fest people, uh, activities going on down at the library. There's, there's a lot going on and I was glad to represent the, the, the school board, uh, school district. Um, I was also at the Community Safety Talk. I, it, it, great, uh, President Stabin was there as well. And, uh, to spin off from that, the WASB, the Washington Association of School Boards, we're going to bring all the, all the trustees, I don't know if the superintendents need to hear this as much, but we want to, uh, share with them the threat assessment protocol that's been going around. And you may have seen the purple binder. Uh, it's, yeah, being waved from the back. Um, we want to do that virtually just to make sure all of our board members are aware of what that's all about. Uh, so we can talk about some key words. I learned a few key words that have been extraordinarily helpful. And, uh, we'll share that later. Um, this, uh, to go to what Secretary Jones and I both attended the WASB Legislative Coffee. We hold, hold that once every three or four months. We had, uh, Senators Tice and Irwin were there, Representatives Braybeck, Robbie, Lesinski, and, uh, even Representative from Debbie Dingell's office was there. And interestingly, a couple of interesting things came out. The redistricting maps mean that we're probably going to get a couple more legislators attending these morning coffees because the, the boundaries overlap in weird ways with Washington, which is, it'll, it'll be fun. Uh, we discussed, uh, the limits of term limits. We, I'm going to read my notes here. Uh, concerns about the 75% attendance threshold that's really affecting some districts a lot more than us. Oh, and Dr. Lott was there, right, of course. Um, the weaknesses of the M-step as an evaluation tool, especially during the pandemic, the substitute shortage. And, uh, the, the concerns about carefully investing money in our communities, this ESER, these ESER funds. So I'm looking forward to listening in. That'll be a virtual conversation, uh, February 3rd? Okay. Well, we'll have to figure out the quorum thing. Um, also this morning, I, I am, as part of the advocacy group for the National School Boards Association, nobody's face-to-face. I told you the last time I was meeting, we're not in Washington this time. So this morning we had a break, quote, breakfast with Senator, Senator Stabinow and Peters this morning. I just wanted to share a few things. Senator Stabinow expressed, really expressed her, uh, deep support for schools during this incredibly difficult time the past year. We had discussions about the American Rescue Plan, high-speed internet. Uh, and she noted that the COVID, the pandemic has really amplified disparities with, uh, access to high-speed internet. Um, we're, we're doing pretty well in Celine, but just, you know, within Washington, even we're, we still have pockets that are uh, not very strong. Uh, we talked about IDEA funding as well. Oh, we talked about school-based health centers, hallways to healthcare is what they're calling it. Um, and IDEA funding, now ever since it came out in 1975, the, um, the IDEA, uh, or Act, sorry, that's redundant, but, um, has never been fully funded at the federal level. And we're slowly, apparently we're starting to see progress. We're slowly, slowly, slowly getting the feds to, to put in their share. And each year we, we, you know, it, it gets a little better and a little better. And I've heard some very positive comments from Senator Stabinow about that. So, um, uh, the rest of that advocacy weekend is all going to be virtual. They're, they're going to be shipping out videos from the speakers that they had in Washington this week. And, uh, so I won't be able to see those. I paid for them. We paid for them as a district. And, uh, I'm looking forward to seeing them in, uh, in a few weeks. February 5th, I think they get released. So. And I'll give you any updates from those. So yeah, it's been a busy week for all of us. And thank you for everyone who's attended these wonderful extra sessions. So.
I wasn't going to talk about the High Point, um, because I, I know, um, so Vice President McVeigh and I, um, attended the WISD's High Point ribbon cutting celebration. And so we, um, got to tour, um, the renovation, um, that they did of the school, uh, which was made possible through, uh, the WISD bond passage in 2019. Thank you voters. Um, and it was absolutely, um, amazing to see, um, how much they've put in. Um, that makes the, um, building more accessible, um, to students with, um, disabilities. Um, and so, uh, it, it was just wonderful. I wanted to go play on the playground and uh, walk the trails, um, that is totally accessible. Um, and so, um, I'm super excited about that. And I believe, um, the students have entered, um, are now in that building. Yeah. So, um, yeah. So that, that was exciting and I hope we get another, uh, opportunity to check it out. Um, I believe they were having something in the spring as well. Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was snowy. Um, this Thursday, I'm attending Michigan Department of Education's webinar, um, which is the role of diversity within the literature that we teach. Um, I hope that, uh, some of the Celine Area Schools teachers and staff, uh, will be able to join the webinar as well. Um, so I was invited, um, as a distinguished guest and served as a panelist speaker for the Victories, Victory Institute's National LGBTQ Elected Officials convening. The topic was education from pre-K to post-secondary. It was truly an honor to lead at the national level and to share what we're doing here in Celine and Michigan. That's all.
Jenny, did you have anything? All right, I'm going to skip two. I feel like I've talked enough tonight about what I've been working on. Um, moving on to consent agenda, um, the following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any, any one or all be considered individually. Uh, item A, approval of the Board of Education organizational and regular meeting minutes of January 11th, 2022. B, approval of payment of the general fund accounts payable of January 25th, 2022 in the amount of $795,857.10. C, approval of payment of the bond series three accounts payable of January 25th, 2022 in the amount of $63,125.09. And D, receive and file human resources report. Um, could I please entertain a motion to authorize all of the items on the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. McVeigh?
Michael, thank you.
Gerby, second.
Brad, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. Um, in closing, items scheduled on our next agenda. Dr. Lott?
Uh, continue to learn again, and then, um, an enrollment report.
Okay. Enrollment, um, thank you. Um, now is our second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. I am seeing no students. I am seeing one parent, Louis Burnett, if you are here and would like to speak. Hi there. Um, if you can just make sure it's toggled on to the green light, you're all set to go.
Yes. Uh, what I want to talk about was the ESER three funds. So, um, I'm glad to hear that it's been brought up and there will be some discussion. Of interest to me is that 20% of those funds should be going towards learning loss exclusively with stakeholder feedback. So it's great that, uh, there's going to be a session on February 3rd. And to go further, uh, I'd like to see if, uh, for parents that can't attend there, if there'd be a survey that could be sent out. And, um, that's pretty much it. So I'll keep it short and sweet. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your comments. Um, next meeting. Um, the next special meeting of the Board of Education will be as we described for the trustee vacancy on, uh, February 7th, 2022 at 5:30 PM. And our next regular Board of Education meeting will be held on February 8th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Um, I'd like to now please entertain a motion to enter closed session of the Board of Education at 7:57 PM, uh, with the intent to reopen, um, re-enter open session at 8:30 PM under section 8F of the Open Meetings Act to review and consider the contents of an application for employment. A simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into this closed session. There will be possible action after closed session. Um, could I please entertain a motion to, uh, go into closed?
So moved.
Jenny, thank you.
Second.
Candace, thank you. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries six zero. We are in closed session. If everyone could please, um, grab their belongings as they're exiting, um, that would be great.
Anna, just let me know when we're live. Okay, perfect. So at 8:41, there was a motion made by trustee Miller to reenter open session of the regular Board of Education meeting at 8:41. And that was seconded by Treasurer Gerby. Thank you. Motion carried 6-0. I'd like to now please entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting of January 25, 2022 at 8:42 PM.
So moved.
Jenny, thank you.
Support.
Candace, support. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries 6-0. We are adjourned at 8:42.